Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are about to begin this evening's proceedings. Honorable Minister of Youth, Sports and Culture, the Honorable Danny Johnson, the Honorable Minister Louis Farrakhan, Mr. Peter Nygaard, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Wendell Jones and I have the honour to be the moderator for this evening's town meeting. Tonight we welcome all of you who have come to this meeting and we trust that you would leave this meeting better educated, better enlightened, and a better understanding of what we are about and a better understanding of ourselves. It is my honour now to ask Mrs. Ruby Ann Cooper-Darling, who would come forward and she would open with a prayer and the national anthem of the Bahamas. Mrs. Cooper-Darling.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, may we stand please? God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, we give you thanks for bringing us thus far on our way. We thank you for bringing us to this place tonight and we pray that you will open our eyes, that we may see glimpses of truth thou hast for us, that you will place in our hands a wonderful key that shall unclap and set us free. And so silently now we wait for thee, where do our gods thy will to see? Open our eyes and illuminate us, Savior Divine. We pray for those who are gathered here and those who have come from afar and we pray that souls would be stirred and hearts would be enlightened and truths will continue to march on. In Jesus' name we pray, amen and amen. Lift up your head to the rising sun, Bahamian land. March on to glory, your bright banner's waving high. See how the rock marks the manner of your bearing, pledge to excel through love and unity. Pressing onward, march together to a common lofty goal. Steady onward though the weather hath wide and treacherous shore. Lift up your head to the rising sun, Bahamian land. Tell the road you trod, lead unto your God. March on, Bahamian land. Thank you.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in for a treat this evening and we'd like to welcome those who are listening to us by means of radio and who are watching us by means of television. In 2005, I met the featured speaker for this evening and I was awed and I found him to be quite a compelling speaker. Today again, I had the great honour of having an interview with him and it is my delight to be here this evening. We especially welcome Minister Louis Farrakhan to the Bahamas and we also welcome those persons who are seated here on the panel as resource people this evening. There are a good number of Bahamians who joined a noble effort some years ago to save Clifton. This was a grassroots movement to recognise and retain the heritage of Africans who came to the Bahamas and even the legacy of loyalists who settled here as well. This means that we have a rich heritage and this means too, that we have to become culturally literate in the Bahamas. And to be culturally literate is to possess the basic information needed to thrive in this postmodern world. The breadth of that information is great, extending over centuries and over major domains of human activity, from religion to science. Cultural literacy constitutes the only shore avenue for us to appreciate ourselves, our origin, our heritage and what we have become. And so tonight, we welcome all of you here again to this town meeting and we trust that as a result of what you hear this evening, you will go out and spread the word and you will become better culturally literate. This evening, it's my great pleasure to invite the chairman of renaabusi.org, Mr. Cole Smith, to the podium. Mr. Smith is a former member of parliament and former ambassador for the environment and former chairman of the best commission. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Cole Smith.
Friends, protocol having been established, I will just go straight into it. My task is really simple this afternoon. I would wish to first of all, welcome all of you to come out tonight. And in particular, I want to recognise, in the first instance, Miss Beverly Smith. This is the lady in the very beautiful jacket who has very willingly and selflessly loaned to us fourteen years ago, her celebrity, to be sure that the battle which we waged back then against the government, it was not a political issue, but against the government not the less, and against huge investment dollars to take this particular land and to profit from it, that she made a determination that she would lend her celebrity to take the fight to the United States. We did and we in fact won. Because of what she was able to achieve for us, on behalf of us, as an honorary Bahamian, named as such by none other than the father of our nation some years ago, that we were able to have legislation passed eventually in 2004, which took the land and put it in a statutory body for it to be kept forever. That is now by legislation. And it is crucial that I mention that so that we get rid of those detractors who've been attempting to mislead this discussion now. The purpose behind this discussion is not the saving of the land, we have the land. The purpose of this discussion is to ensure that there is no one and that we do not permit anyone to rewrite the history that surrounds the struggle. As Mr. Jones mentioned, all of you in here know that that was indeed a grassroots movement. And the reason why you never hear people like me and the person who inspired me to be in this fight, Mr. Vivian Wiley, who is sitting at the very front and if I ask Vivian to stand please. Vivian was the person who caused us to understand and to summarise some of the words he used. He said, "We cannot," and he said this publicly, "we cannot allow this land to be turned into a gated community because I, Vivian," and so therefore maybe other people, "but I have family who lived, worked, died and are buried on that land." And that was the thing that inspired me from him as a childhood friend when he spoke in 1998. I think it was May, am I not right? 1998, to give us all the impetus to get started to save this land. But now what we have is we have people who are trying to rewrite the nature of that struggle that all of us came together with and made sure that we protected this place for the benefit of our unborn generations. We must turn that back. And in particular, we have a particular person who is not the focus of this issue, but I must name him, Mr. Louis Bacon, who recently received an award in New York. Now, this award was an award for environmental leadership and I don't think anyone would sensibly, would be taken as being sensible to suggest that Mr. Bacon has not done some things for the environment at large. But when he spoke and he suggested that it was only because of him essentially, by his leadership, that saved this land, then all of the people that I see now in this room where there's standing room only, I see a lot of normal, if I could say it like that, ordinary people who caused this thing to come forth. Like in the Bible, the person who gave all that they had to make sure that this thing came. We cannot allow anyone to rewrite our history. And so a part of what we are doing now is to ensure that as we move forward, that we make ourselves become in tuned with the necessity to write down in real time what is happening in our country so that my children, your grandchildren, great grandchildren and ten generations onward would know what the truth is. And that is indeed part of the reason why we're here. Now, having said that, I just want to recognise very special people at this panel. I've already spoken about Bev, I can't begin to speak more about her. She is so special to us and to our cause. But if I start at the very end of the table, we have Mr. Fain Thompson, who is a barrister in the Bahamas, very capable attorney and also nowadays, he's a talk show host and very deep in his understanding and meaning. We have immediately next to him, the lady that they call the woman with the hats, and that is Miss Dorothy Tillman. She is a former alderman of Chicago, Illinois and she is one of the guests that Miss Bev Smith determined to bring back on this trip. She is also, for those Rastafarian brothers I have in the audience, she was able to show, priests, this is something for you to take back to the brethren, she was able to achieve in Chicago and now across the United States, real effect of reparation to show that those companies and those individuals in this world who've benefited on the backs of slaves pay today and it is happening right now in the United States of America because of our activities. And you know, my heart is close to what reparation stands for us as black people. Then we have immediately next to Miss Tillman is we have the Reverend Dr. Ruby Ann Darling. Now, she is the first female in the Bahamas that registered to vote. She is considered to be a freedom fighter in the Bahamas. She was a former member of parliament in the Bahamas for Exuma. Was it, I don't think there were two Exuma seats in those days, but for Exuma nonetheless and she is loved and respected by all of us. She has a lot to offer and we appreciate her and I'm very grateful that she agreed to sit on this panel today. And now you know, no disrespect to the other panelists. You know, in the Bahamas, we say last man, best bone. And we have someone whose accolades too numerous for me to mention from this podium. It's safe for me to be able to say that he resides somewhere in the stratosphere. He is a person that anyone who prides themselves on being African, and this is not to suggest that you don't love other people, but we know that he is a man who has been able to keep the whole concept of what we as African people in the diaspora ought to be focused on. And we're talking about none other than the Honourable Minister Louis Farrakhan. And I will say, as I take my seat and invite Mr. Jones to call our keynote speaker, which is who would be Mr. Farrakhan, to the podium, to say that, and I say this, Minister, if I can borrow from you please, and this is for the benefit of my two younger children, who of course are not here, who might be watching by TV at this moment, that it was, or were persons like he, words that he spoke over my ears that inspired me to be what I am for better or worse today. And I am grateful and I wish to say, not only in this body, not only nationally in the Bahamas, but we are now streaming by the internet right now as we speak, so I say this for the world, that even in the Bahamas, you have a man like Mr. Louis Farrakhan who can in fact inspire persons in other parts of the globe. And I am grateful for the internet because now, no one can misinterpret what he has said over these many years. And so I am grateful to him, I know we are grateful to him. I will take my seat and as and when we get to question times, if there's anything, then I'll be very grateful that you would ask the questions and be as respectful as this office authority body entails. So thank you very much and welcome again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Wow, we have a great audience here this evening and we are so pleased that all of you have decided to come here this night. Over my journalistic career, we have interviewed some of the movers and shakers from around the world. And the only one who came very close to our featured speaker this evening is Mr. Kwame Ture or Mr. Stokely Carmichael. We've not found any who is as erudite and with the high octane intellect as our speaker, who is more compelling, more spellbinding, more spiritual, indeed more inspirational and motivational. He is revered around the globe. And tonight, we are going to find out what real empowerment is about. We're going to better understand ourselves in this diaspora. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my great honour to present to you this evening, to introduce to others the Honourable Minister Louis Farrakhan, the leader of the Nation of Israel. Give him a big round of applause.
In the name of Allah, the beneficent, the merciful, we give him praise and thanks for his mercy and his goodness to the members of the human family. That whenever any member of this family strays from his straight path and earns his displeasure, before he chastises or punishes, he always raises from among that people a prophet or a messenger to whom he gives what is called divine revelation, by means of which he guides who will back to God's straight path and once again to his divine favour. As a Muslim, we believe in all of the prophets and we make no distinction between them. We thank Allah for Moses and the Israelite prophets who gave to us what is called the Old Testament. We thank Allah for Jesus and the apostles who gave to us the gospel and what is called the New Testament. We thank Allah for Prophet Muhammad Ibn Abdullah, through whom Allah sent down his final revelation to this world, the Holy Quran. Peace be upon these worthy servants of Allah. I am a student of the most Honourable Elijah Muhammad and I could never thank Allah enough for his merciful intervention in the affairs of the black man and woman of America and the Western Hemisphere, a people lost that the scriptures refer to as the lost sheep, a people despised and rejected, not because they are not a good people, but because of the circumstances, of the horror of the transatlantic slave trade, the dehumanisation of millions of black people to be made slaves, chattel slaves, stripped of our names, our language, our culture, our religion, our God and our history. And as Carter G. Woodson said, "A people without a knowledge of their history is like a tree without roots." That means we're dead. We have eyes, but we can't see. We have ears, but we have not heard. We have tongues that cannot speak the truth because we have not had those to speak truth, that kind of truth that would make us free. I thank Allah for the Honourable Elijah Muhammad and I thank him for allowing me this privilege to be here in the Bahamas with my sister Bev Smith, with my other great sister Dorothy Tillman, on the invitation of Mr. Cole Smith and of course, Mr. Jones and our brother barrister at the end of the table and Mr. Nygaard, whom I personally thank for allowing us the use of your beautiful airplane to get me from Miami to the Bahamas. I greet all of you, my dear and wonderful brothers and sisters, with the greeting words of peace. We say it in the Arabic language, Assalamu Alaikum. Now, I'm here tonight, really, I came to the Bahamas. Mr. Fenley Lason is a friend of our family and I came here a long time ago to see my brother and I came back again to make a lecture at the university and to be on radio and television because I've been touring the Caribbean. But I did not know what I learned from my dear sister Bev Smith, whom I have known for a long time. And Bev, I was telling, I think, I don't know whether I mentioned it to Cole, but the Million Man March, which I was blessed to call, was announced on Bev Smith's show on BET. She broke the news to the country that we were planning a Million Man March. And I have to tell you, I said it when I was in New York speaking to about fourteen thousand black men because we decided that as Genesis started with God making a man, if we were going to have a renewal of our people, we would have to start again by renewing the black man. So in New York City, it came out of my mouth, "I'm going to take a million black men to Washington." I said it and then I had to catch it because it was gone then. And we worked for nearly two years touring the United States of America, talking to black men. We told them that we're not going to have the usual march that takes place on a weekend. We're going to have it on a Monday and you're going to have to not go to work, not go to school, make a sacrifice because we don't have any philanthropists that are going to get buses for you. You're going to have to get them for yourself. And black men from all over America, black men from different parts of the world, black men from the Bahamas, black men from Jamaica, from St. Kitts, from Germany, came to the Million Man March. I thank God for that experience, but it made us to see that this is the time in history for our rise as a people. And even though it frightens others to see our rise and to see organisational strength and unity, if it were not for the unity of the Bahamas behind Brother Wiley, we wouldn't have that law. And if it were not for sisters like Bev Smith who took this on in the United States, we wouldn't be celebrating a victory. And if it were not for men like Cole Smith, who made it very clear, no one, no revisionist of history should be able to take from the people their victory. That is a sign that when you don't write your own history, others will write it for you and they will tell it like it is. and they will tell it like it is. I thank you, Bev, because I didn't know anything about the Clifton Heritage and that plot of land and what it stood for. I came to make a speech and I got a lesson. And I'm proud to say that I became a student yesterday, once again, to learn from Mr. Wiley, to learn from Bev Smith and others, the fight that you have endured to get that piece of land. And you have to continue to fight to keep it. But the fight is bigger than that. If we in the Caribbean don't wake up fast, we'll wake up one morning and not only will our history be revised, but we'll be extinct. The black man is a dying person, not only in America, in the Caribbean and Africa, but this is by design. Social engineering has us killing each other in the United States, in the Caribbean, in Africa. And the black male in particular is the object of total destruction. You, may I read something from this book? I just wanted to say something and I want you to just think about it. I won't be long, but I have to be strong. Now, you are fighting. Really, we are fighting for our life and we're fighting for our right to the earth that is beneath our feet, that our blood has soaked the soil of America, of the Caribbean, and these lands that are so beautiful with the sand and the sea and the sun are now attracting a lot of forces that want these lands for themselves. I cannot blame them for wanting a bit of paradise. But we can blame ourselves if we allow paradise to be taken from us that we that we will end up in 2013, 14, 15, degenerating once again to be the servants of others, the bearers of wood, the hewers of wood and the drawers of water for others when this is our time to go free and return to that great position that we once held. And what is that position? The scripture says, "I am Alpha" and Omega, the beginning and the ending. Well, we are the beginning. The black man and woman are the beginning of every people that walk this planet. This is not racism. This is an actual fact. And the reason you don't love yourself as you should is because no one has had the courage or if they had the knowledge, they didn't have the platform to teach it so that we would grow up not being arrogantly, falsely proud, but being proud of who God made us to be and allowed us to suffer for his purpose. And what was his purpose? Some of you have grandchildren. Have you ever had your grandchildren by the house and you fell asleep? And when you woke up, your house was in a mess? Because your grandchildren had the freedom while you were asleep to mess up your house. You know, they call Africa a sleeping giant and they call the black man asleep. But the scriptures don't refer to us as asleep. The scriptures refer to us as dead. Dead, not in the physical sense, but dead spiritually, dead mentally, dead economically, dead politically, somebody else always doing something for us while we have the ability to do things for ourselves. So in 1974, Henry Kissinger, who was then the Secretary of State under President Nixon, signed a National Security Memorandum 200 titled, quote, "Implications of Worldwide Population Growth for U.S. Security and Overseas Interests." It was adopted as official policy of the United States government in 1975 by President Gerald Ford. And those who analyzed Dr. Kissinger's proposal said that they analyzed his proposal and this is what they came up with, quote, Dr. Kissinger, "Depopulation." Do you know what that means? Depopulation should be the highest priority of U.S. foreign policy towards the Third World. He quoted reasons of national security and because the U.S. economy will require large and increasing amounts of minerals from abroad, especially from less developed countries. And wherever a lessening of population can increase the prospects for such stability, population policy becomes relevant to resources, supplies and to the economic interests of the United States. So now, this policy being used in Third World countries is also being used in developed countries. This document was signed by Henry Kissinger and directed. Now, look at the departments that this document was directed to. First, the Secretaries of Defense, Agriculture and Central Intelligence. Defense, depopulation. Agriculture, depopulation. Central Intelligence, depopulation. Now, what does this mean to the Bahamas? What does this mean to Africa? Kissinger wanted the population of our planet to be culled by 2 to 3 billion people. You can't even wrap your mind around a human being that wants to kill 2 to 3 billion people so that they can have access to the resources under the foot of the black and the brown and the red and the yellow people of our planet. Now, Bev darling, you know, Clifton Heritage Foundation is a part of an international, universal struggle to maintain possession of what is actually ours. You all all right so far? Now, listen to Mr. Zbigniew Brzezinski, the former National Security Advisor under Jimmy Carter. Listen to what he said. "The major world powers, new and old, also face a novel reality. While the lethality of their military might is greater than ever, their capacity to impose control over the politically awakened masses of the world is at an historic low." To put it bluntly, in earlier times, it was easier to control 1 million people than to physically kill 1 million people. Today, it is infinitely easier to kill 1 million people than to control 1 million people. Now, this is not Farrakhan, the so-called hate teacher, the so-called anti-white, anti-Semitic man talking. This is high government officials with a satanic mind to kill human beings to extract from under their foot their natural strength in their resources. Is that going on in the Bahamas? Is it going on in the Caribbean? What hurt me as I traveled in the Caribbean was to find the land so fertile, arable, rich that you could almost spit and a banana tree grow. Forget me relaxing. Seriously, but no island in the Caribbean is self-sufficient feeding themselves. None. The Bahamas has arable land. However, let me read it to you. Arable land, six tenths of 1%. Permanent crops, three tenths of 1%. Others using the land, 99.1%. So the development of that which is necessary to maintain our health, strength and well-being, this body is from the earth. It will one day return to the earth, but this body can be maintained with the science of food and what comes from the earth. But if we're not producing the food and all our food is coming from outside. Now, let me read to you how the Defense Department is following that policy. Now, if you notice, we're at war in Afghanistan, in Iraq. Drones are dropping bombs on several countries. Although Mr. Obama got the Nobel Peace Prize, he's dropping more bombs on countries than any president before he's even beaten Bush. Now, don't fault me. Don't fault me. I'm just telling the truth. I love President Obama. He's my brother. And he killed my other brother. And I'm not a cadaver. I didn't like that because most of you don't know Gaddafi and most of you don't know why he had to be killed. And most of you don't know that that was a policy of the government of the United States that would give them unfettered access to Africa. And just as it was in 1884, I believe it was, when all the European nations got together at the Berlin Conference to carve up Africa and its resources, the scramble is on again now for Africa. China is here. I ain't saying nothing wrong. China is here. And I see them building nice hotels. China is smart. China is aggressive. But China is not like America. China invited every African head of state to Beijing. And when they went, most of them did go. It was a free trip. And you know how we love to... So we were in Beijing sitting with the Chinese government and working an arrangement that was mutually satisfactory. The Chinese would come in, they would help build infrastructure, roads, railroads, connecting nations together, seaports, all of these things China was willing to do, Russia was willing to do. But you know, China has 1,350,000 Chinese. They, oh God, Thank you, sir. And they're not supposed to have but one child, you know. And now they're saying, "Oh God, if they have one, we don't have any more land to support our population." So this was a mutual agreement that they would come help Africa with her agriculture, help Africa. So Africa's food would not only feed Africa, but help to feed China. And the mineral strength of Africa, which no world power except Russia can be a world power without access to the mineral strength that is found in Africa. Now, watch this. We've dropped bombs in Iraq called Shark and Oil. Do you remember that? On the basis of? Say it again. Now, when a president can lie, a Secretary of State can lie, the FBI, the CIA can manage intelligence so that intelligence fills, I mean fulfills policy, not guides policy. Boy, boy, boy. I'm telling you, you got a country up north. I lived there. I lived there. I don't want to live no place else. We paid a hell of a price for America. And I want to claim the country that belongs to us. And we should not give up our right to that land as Mr. Wiley and those with him will not give up the rights to what is theirs. And I already told Mr. Obama, don't let Israel make a war with Iran and think that we're gonna fight that war for you or for Israel. We'll fight as long as we have something to fight for. You all alright? In other words, we're asking America for eight to ten states. That's a light payment. That's a light payment. Now, you may say, America ain't gonna give you nothing. Just keep watching. America will do whatever is necessary to do to save her life. And her life is in peril, not from any foreign power. The foreign powers don't control rain, hail, snow, and earthquake and tornadoes and hurricane. You can call it global warming or climate warming, but it's actually God himself interfering now. And the judgment of God is on the United States of America. You can take it or leave it. You say, well, God Farrakhan, man, you're talking strong. No, it's not new. They won't abide my talk too much longer, but I won't force them to make a move on me. I want you to watch this. See, they killed their last prophet when they killed Jesus. And they killed their last black brother when they killed Martin Luther King and Malcolm X. They're not gonna put that small-time stuff over on us today. God is present in the world. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down now because I just gotta finish this point though. We went to war with Iraq. They dropped bombs, depleted uranium in those bombs. They had Saddam Hussein under sanctions. I visited Iraq while it was under sanctions. I spoke in Shia mosques, in Sunni mosques. I saw Christian churches and Jewish synagogues. None of them fighting and killing each other until America got there. See, that's how you know the mischief maker, the troublemaker. Because they were at peace in their house until America with her forces got there. Now Shiite mosques being bombed, Sunni mosques being bombed, Christians and Muslims at each other's throats. Well, this is organized. We all have some dissatisfaction, some dislikes with each other, but to manipulate those things about which we differ to make us enemies of one another to satisfy the bloodshedder and the mischief maker. So now, the depleted uranium is killing tens of thousands of Iraqis, but American soldiers have been there two and three and four duties, tours of duty, and they're coming home sick. Remember, they dropped Agent Orange in Vietnam and the soldiers came home and they were ill. In America, the government would not even admit that they were the victims of Agent Orange. People worked in these atomic bomb plants, making atomic weapons and dying of radiation. And it took forty years for the government to admit that it was the work that they were doing. This is the Department of Defense. But let's get down to the Department of Agriculture. They got genetically modified organisms. I hope you're listening, Bahamas. They have chemical additives in foods. They have poison in vaccines. I was in Zimbabwe and the Minister of Health invited us to a luncheon. And I was mortified when she said she was very proud that every child in Zimbabwe had been vaccinated. Let me ask you a question. Do you think you should trust your former colonial and slave master who has desires for what God has given you to vaccinate you like he did with the Indians, you know? It was weather, it was cold, we want you to have some blankets. And then they come with smallpox in the blankets. See, they always have a noble motive to trick you into submission to your own self-destruction. Now, eugenicists, you know who they are? Planned Parenthood. Are you worried, you know, you're having too many children now? And you know, we think, we think. And they say it in such a soft, sweet voice. And they put a black woman out there as the front person. You know, you've had three children and really that is enough, don't you think? And if you continue to have them, you know, you may not have enough food and whatnot and whatnot. Go look at Grandma and Grandpa. Grandma and Grandpa. They didn't know nothing about this birth control business, you know. They may have had four, five, six, eight, nine, ten children. They always had something in the pot for them ten, and then a guest could come and they'd have soup for them. You remember that, right? Grandpa never needed Viagra. I don't know what's wrong with these young people. So they make pills. They got a pill for this, a pill for that. And you're all peeled up. You're tired, take this. You're too energetic, take this. You're high strung, take this. You can't, you know, do what you do, take this. Things too small, you wanna grow them big, take this. Because you know, bigger, bigger is better, you know. Bad news always goes down easier with orange juice and gas, don't worry. My point is that even though we may be living a little longer, we're not living better. Throughout Africa, AIDS is decimating the population in those areas where the mineral strength is. That's not an accident. And in the black community in North America, our women and girls are the greatest carriers of the AIDS virus. How did that happen? They take our young men off the street. Any little thing they do, they arrest them. When they come into prison, a doctor takes their blood to make sure they don't have any disease. But when they're coming out, nobody is checking. So they engage in behavior that is not, you know, normal. And the poor little fellas, when they come out in the street, you know, they... I'm gonna see my girlfriend, and I can't let my girlfriend know what I've been doing in jail. Now, I'm carrying something. And I'm giving it to the one that waited for me while I was in prison. It's your love of the pleasure of sex that is crippling us today with these diseases. God intended for us and for sex to be pleasure. Because the pain of the pleasure is to bring you birth. And the pain of the pleasure now is that you gotta rear your children in a world like this. So God gives you pleasure at the point of creation of new life and then pain at the coming to birth of that new life to show you that it is pain that births you into new realities. So here we are, a people now in pain. Now AIDS is killing us, vaccines. I was going to Africa, the doctor came with a needle. And I said, "Doctor." And I said, "Doctor, do you know what's in that bottle?" He said, "Yes, it's what's on the label." I said, "No, no, 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 doc." I said, "Have you tested what's in that bottle to make sure that it corresponds with the label?" "No." See, we trust too much. And we don't have adequate education to set up the type of checks and balances that is necessary to save our population from the wicked designs. And that's why Paul said, "We war not against flesh and blood, but against principalities and powers and the rulers of the darkness of this world and spiritual wickedness up in high places." So I think I've said enough. I just want us to think. The average age of the average farmer in the Caribbean is sixty-two years of age. And when the farmers leave, they have not attracted young people into agriculture so that we can take the land and make it produce for the good of the people. All of us have been trained to look down on a farmer. And I remember when the brothers would come up from Georgia and Alabama and Mississippi, we in the north would say, "Man, it's a farmer." Yeah, country boy and a farmer, as though that's not a decent profession. You a doctor? You a lawyer? You a teacher? You work in government? Good. Do you eat? So if you eat and you don't respect a farmer with the hard work that they do to produce good quality food for you, then you continue to buy at the local supermarket. It looks good. Boy, it tastes good. Now Kentucky Fried, you all can sue me. Burger King, you all can sue me. But fast food, see, we didn't know nothing about that growing up, my age. I'll be eighty in two more months. Now, look at this. No, no. No. This fast food is killing us. These are scientists who know how to deceive your taste buds. You think you've eaten one thing and you're eating another. My dear sisters, there was a time when you would cook. I'm gonna sit down, I'm getting in a lot of trouble already. But listen, dear sisters. Hippocrates, the father of modern medicine, European or Western medicine, said, "Let your medicine be your food." And let your food be your medicine. The problem is, we don't have time. We don't take time. We don't make time. And this has devalued the female. Because the female is the first nurse in the house. Sometime even the first doctor. Doctor, let me tell you something. I never needed you. My mother was sufficient. She knew them bushes, you know. I get a cold, she go get a bush. Cold gone. They call them witch doctors. Well, you better know witch doctor to put your life in their hands. So I implore us, this is a great nation, the Bahamas. You are the richest of the whole Caribbean. So I read, you can tell that when you talk to a little man. He don't know nothing about. This is the riches. And what makes you rich? It's tourism and the banking industry. Well, how many of you got money in the bank? I know some in this room got some money in the bank. But the little man out there, he's working from week to week, from paycheck to paycheck. He can't feel the riches of the Bahamas. But let me throw something on your table in case I never see you again. The Federal Reserve Bank is printing eighty-five billion dollars every month. The presses are running almost twenty-four hours a day, printing money. Those of you who are wise in political science, you know, when you want to destabilize a country, get their currency, counterfeit that currency, and put more of that in circulation. And the more counterfeit money that's in circulation, you weaken the effect of the money that's already in circulation that is racked up by the GDP of that country. Well, as I leave you, they're putting eighty-five billion dollars into the economy every month. That is to prop up the falling economy of America. Sixteen point four going on, sixteen point five trillion dollars in debt. And if you add Social Security, if you add Medicaid and Medicare, America is about sixty-five to eighty trillion dollars in debt. More than every piece of land, every building on the land. More than every piece of land, every building on the land. America is in debt. So to keep up the front, keep printing. 'Cause she just put a lot of millions in meddling in Syria. Keep on, you know. All of this is coming back home. You can mark my words from the Honorable Elijah Muhammad, that dollar is going to crash. And when that dollar comes down, how is the Bahamian dollar gonna stand if the American dollar collapses? Elijah Muhammad was not just some little Negro leader that jumped up. We believe he was a messenger of God.
Yes, sir.
Guided by God. No, just listen, man. I'm his student. He said that the stock market is going to crash, and the wealth of America will be destroyed. The collapse of the stock market, yeah, write this down. Be sure you get it right now. You know, they love to quote Farrakhan. Quote me right, and then breathe long enough to see that I am not only right, but a hundred percent right. You put your trust in a dollar, but there is no trust in something that is about to collapse. Go ahead and put your money in the stock market. She's going up now, getting ready for the big bus. And money happens. You see all these hotels you're building? Who you think is coming? No, you didn't hear me. I just came to warn you, and I'm through. But you'll remember what your brother told you when you see it come to pass. You're building like you're gonna have all these tourists coming when war breaks out with Iran and war breaks out in Europe. Europe will be decimated. She's not coming here. And the Americans will be tied up. Where will your economy be if you don't diversify and find some other way of keeping your country strong? Thank you for listening. Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I told you so. I told you so. Very good. Thank you so very much. And we'd like to thank the Honorable Minister for this most compelling address. I told him he is a master teacher. And now we are going to invite members of the audience to the microphone. I don't know if some of our panelists here would like to add their voices to what has been said. And I believe that that is what our chairman, Mr. Smith, would wish. And so we are going to give them an opportunity to address you for just a few minutes. Just two minutes. Two minutes, we would hear from the resource panel here this evening, beginning with Mrs. Beverly Smith. They've already been adequately introduced by Cole Smith. And so in the interest of time, we are going to ask each of them to address you for two minutes. And then after that, you feel free to use the microphone in the middle of the floor. You can ask questions of the Honorable Minister here, as well as members of the panel. I have the opportunity to have Minister Farrakhan all by myself, so I'm not asking questions tonight. So we begin this evening with Bev Smith.
Good evening. I think that is the saddest good evening I've heard since I came to the island. If you know that you have been redeemed by a message that will save you, if you know that it's time for you to wake up and join up and connect up and hold on, good evening, Nassau. Good evening, Nassau. Good evening, Nassau. I am here because fourteen years ago, Attorney Cole Smith introduced me to Vivian Wiley. And I am African. I make no apologies for being Eve. I make no apologies for being the mother of creation. And so I was told a story. Hello, somebody?
Hello.
Wait a minute, you are far too quiet. These are desperate times. It's time for us to know who we are. The minister told you that if you don't know who you were and who you are, you don't know who you can become. I came here to tell you that what you have at Clifton, I wish we had in America. You have a place where the essence of the people that looked like you came. I remember when Vivian and Cole took me in the cave. I was younger then, and so I could walk down the steps without having any help. But when I got to the front of the cave, Cole said to me, "Take a look outside." And when I looked at the cave, it was shaped in the shape of Africa. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but if you haven't, you owe it to yourself and your children to take a look at what God left as a memory to the people who were here. Now, it was not the slaves who made the shape of Africa. It was the wind, the breath of God, as the slaves carved steps with their hands and with tools to get to the top so it would be easier for them to carry whatever the slave master wanted them to carry. And then I stood on a piece of land, and I looked out. And I felt something that my father felt as he stood trying to get a job in construction in Pittsburgh. And I felt something that my mother felt when with her college degree she had to work in a kitchen because my father, as a black man, could not get a job in construction. I felt my ancestors crying to me, "Don't forget Africa." And fourteen years later, I stood on a piece of land and carved out of the wood of that land were women. Women facing every part of the globe, north, south, east, and west, looking for Africa to return and get them and take them back home. I stood at the spirit of those women. And I am here as an African woman to say to the slaves that are buried in that holy ground, Africa has returned to be with you. Africa has returned to be with you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ruby and Darling. If you can address us now, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and to Minister Farrakhan and to the Honorable Minister Johnson and Mr. Nigga and his entourage and distinguished panelists and those who are gathered here. As I heard the minister speak tonight, I don't see this as a town meeting, Mr. Jones, but I see this as an extraordinary meeting for times such as this. And those who are here are the called to hear a proclamation, a prophetic proclamation go forth. It's serious times in which we live. It's time for truth to be told. The trumpeter on the wall, the watchman, this is no time for the trumpet to be blown for the entertainment of the people, but for the trumpet to be blown for warning of the people is a serious times. And as I sit here tonight, I have been, my soul has been blessed beyond words because I see the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the Alpha, the Omega, the God of ages past and who is our hope for years to come. I see the Bahamas. I've always seen it, you know. You be a voice in the wilderness, speaking, and people think that you're talking nonsense. But I have been speaking for years as to the true value of these islands and that God was not stupid when He made these islands. And those of our forebears who are no longer with us, you know, let me just stop there. I think I go back to my childhood, and I think of a story that always stayed with me. It's a story of a slave, no education. His master wants something, he wants a chisel. And because he does not trust the slave to carry the message right, he takes a chip, and he writes on it. He says, "Take this home to my wife." And the wife goes, reads it, and she goes and gets the chisel, and the slave is baffled. How can the chip speak? Well, God of our weary ears and silent ears has brought us out of that. And now we have among us those who can pronounce, articulate, lucidate. And we have now, God has blessed us that among us, we can interpret. We can read the writing on the wall. And so now we are here for truth, Marjorie. You may can bury truth, Minister Farrakhan. Like a hushers, one night, truth was buried from him. But when God moves, He will bring truth out. You can bury truth in the graveyard, but you don't stay in the graveyard. And one day, while you have left the graveyard, thinking that you have made an end of truth, truth emerges and comes forth to tell the story. And so here in the Bahamas, we must tell the story of how we got over and how we have come to this. God has given us a story, and if you have a story, you better tell it to the nation so that their hearts will turn from falsehood and what has been crowned in propaganda ahead. And so if our history is to stand the test of time, then we must write our history. Nobody can write our history like you. We have gone through the burden and the heat of the day. And I am so thankful to God to be here tonight because my faith has been strengthened. My aspirations have become greater. I am more determined to tell the story that no matter what man does, God reigns supreme. And the time is now when the whole earth will be covered with the knowledge of the glory of God as the waters cover the seas. And those of our forebears who died in the faith will see that their children will rise to make truth known to all and sundry. I give God thanks tonight for being right here. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And Minister Farrakhan, you know, she's from a long list of Baptist preachers, as you can tell. And don't get us started, you know. That is only a foretaste. Now we listen to the remarks from Attorney Fane Thompson, Mr. Thompson.
First, let me say, I am absolutely flattered, honored to be on the same stage with one of the most interesting men in human history. Let me just say that. Having said that, let me also say to Mr. Jones, let me say also to Cole that I congratulate you on setting this up. What I want to echo from the words of Mrs. Ruby and Darling is simply this, that once we affirm our essence by recognizing our past, the strength must be in our diversity and our recognition of our diversity. A big part of the Bahamian experience is the African story. And a big part of our reluctance perhaps to deal with ourselves as black people, African people, whatever you want to call yourself, is our reluctance to deal with our reality. We face some interesting challenges today. I think that's the message which comes from Mr. Farrakhan, and I join in with him. Let me say, I'm honored to be on the same stage with you, sir. And also, Ms. Smith, and of course, Ms. Tillman. These are some freedom fighters who I am honored to sit here with. But the lesson of our past must be that we must set the correct direction for the future. And Mr. Wiley, we gotta have you in a certain place to put you on air. But let me say, ladies and gentlemen, this for me is a tremendous experience. And I hope we all go, my daughters are listening. Let them not, they'll get the tape. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Now, we have left to the last for the best. No, you know, Cole tells me that you have done a remarkable work in the, as a civil rights activist. And so, ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our next speaker, who is going to give us her two minutes. She is a former alderman in the city of Chicago and a civil rights activist, Dorothy Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Brother Cole Smith, thank you for inviting me. Thank you so much. You know, when Cole called me along with Bev Smith, he said to me, "Alderman Tillman, Dorothy Tillman, I talked to Robin Brown, and I knew about your ordens." And he said he talked to Robin Brown, I knew he knew something. So thank you, thank you so much. And I wanna thank Brother Wiley for telling the story, for being strong. I thank you for meeting you. Thank you so much. But you know, Dr. King told us that when you make a motion, somebody got a second in order for the people to vote on it. And I wanna thank Cole for seconding your motion. Thank you so much. My sister Bev, you know, it's something for Bev Smith, Oliver Menison Lewis Farrakhan, and Dorothy Tillman to be on the same platform. The last time we was on the platform, they got all hellboy blues. So I'm delighted to be here. But you know, I'm very delighted to sit next to the spirit of Sister Darling.
Yes.
I am from Alabama. When I walk these fields, I see Alabama. I am a disciple of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So when they told me that Sister Darling registered to vote in 1962, they said she was the first to register. And I said, "What year was that?" She told me 1962. Being one of the first ten people sent into Selma to organize further right to vote and to be on Edmund Pettus Bridge during Bloody Sunday, that felt very dear to me.
That's right.
But when this sister was registering, Bull Connor was putting dogs and hoes on black people in America. So you see the connection of reuniting the family.
That's right.
I'm very glad to be here in the Bahamas this evening because I see that family reuniting. It was written in the paper today that I sued some companies and had a settlement with reparations. I wanna correct it for a moment. I passed a law in ordens that said that anybody that does business with the city of Chicago, they had to fill on the ADS, a disclosure stating their connection to slavery. I don't care what it was, they did not do that. We took their money, and we took their contracts. And we was able to take contracts from several big companies on behalf of the city of Chicago, not a settlement that we did. And doing that, thirteen to fifteen other cities passed that ordinance. And why do I say that? It seemed very small, Wiley, Cole, and the people who are supporting the Clifton Park. A lot of people thought that would not be done. It is very important... It is very important, even though it's a small piece of land, because we too, in the United States, share that history. We can walk through the South and we can see places where our ancestors, well, you can go to the Carolinas, Alabama, you can go to New York and see where bodies are being buried, right where the bodies are buried in New York. The stock market is sitting on top of bones from Africa. And we know that America was built on the backs of black people. We also understand the history of what happened with the slave trade and cotton, not only the cotton in the Bahamas, but the cotton in Alabama. We understand about your rice, not only the rice in the Bahamas, but the Lehman Brothers also doing rice in South Carolina and being a factor in Alabama prolonging slavery. So when I come here tonight, I see us reuniting the family and I think that it's very important in the spirit of our ancestors. Have nothing to do with us, but the spirit of our ancestors who tears right now is in that land, when we came through the land trade, slave trade. Some dropped, jumped off. All of them did not stay on that slave boat now. Some jumped off and some stayed on. And some was dropped off in the Bahamas. Some was dropped off in Trinidad. And some was in Brazil and the rest of us went to the United States of America. And as a descendant of an enslaved, I was not a slave. Was not born a slave. My people were not slaves. We were enslaved. And as a descendant of an enslaved African in America, as we continue our fight in America, it's very important, Brother Wiley, and that's why I'm looking at you and Brother Smith, Cole, I want you to know that your fight is important. It's not a piece of land. It's the principle.
That's right.
You have to understand, it's the principle of Minister Farrakhan, my brother. As a little girl, I'm gonna end. When I was nine years old, I met a man. I never knew I would be part of that man's staff. But in Montgomery, Alabama, and I tell you this story to give you faith and strength. When we would go and we would get on the bus, I was with Mudee. That's why I love you. And I would always ask Mudee, "Why can't I sit up there?" There was a white girl sitting up there and I was cleaner and prettier than they was. She done greased my face, done pressed my hair. My head is burning from the straightening comb. My pant and other shoes were shined because she done shining them with the biscuit. And I can't sit on the front of the bus and I could never understand why I could not sit there. And I said, "I'm gonna do something." And I remember, you know, black women and people would put their money in the front and walk to the back. And I couldn't understand that. I wanted to do it. When Ms. Parks refused to give her seat to a white man, I understood that Ms. Parks did that for me. Because Ms. Parks refused to give her seat up that day and women decided to walk for freedom, we changed the world. On Edmund Pettus Bridge, when we came across and we faced the billy clubs, we changed the world. In Birmingham, Alabama, when we faced the dogs and we faced the water holes, we changed the world. In Chicago, when we decided that blacks had a right to move past Racine because it was in a ghetto and it was not allowed to move, we changed the world. One person, one people, a group of people can change. It is important that you save that land.
That's right.
Because you have to save the rest of enslaved people in the world. Thank you. I love the descendants of enslaved people because we're with you. The family is reunited. Thank you, Brother Cole. Minister, I use though I love you. Thank you, Minister Farrakhan. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We thank our resource panel this evening for these words of encouragement and they have added already to the rich diet that we got from Minister Louis Farrakhan.
Oh, yes, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Clifton has been won. The Heritage Park is established and we have moved forward, aren't we? And there are many people in this room tonight who will have seen some fellow somewhere in the world who wanted to take some credit for Clifton. And that is why it is written here that we cannot allow an outsider to review or rewrite our history.
Always doing that. That's right.
That is very important.
That's right.
And so, ladies and gentlemen, the mic is open now and all of you here will perhaps have comments. You will probably have questions. Please feel free to go to the microphone in the middle of the floor so that you can ask questions of our panel this evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to say about Islam, like peace be unto you, my brother. My name is Prince Ali. I'm a Bahamian, grew up in the US, Houston, Texas, and New York, in Jersey. I joined the Nation of Islam in 1975, in Jersey, in Newark, New Jersey. And I moved to Houston, Texas. And I was in Mars 45 under Robert Hough. And I've heard you speak many times at Texas Southern University. And I want to say, I thank Allah, Subhanallah, for allowing me to be, to develop your son, Farrakhan, not University of Virginia. Under the guidance of John Lucas, I was his top coach. I now reside here in Nassau, Bahamas, whom I love my hometown so greatly, but I'm unemployed. And I say this to you, or Minister Farrakhan, I'm a student. And I met your son in Las Vegas when John picked his team to go to Vegas for McDonald's All-Americans. Your son was one of them. And he picked his coaching squad and he said, "Coach Prince, you might lead that." Ran through Las Vegas and they brought all the McDonald's All-Americans out. One was his son, John Lucas, who I developed for All-American. I'm still unemployed in Nassau. And as I say to you, I was given your son to develop, two days, three days prior to the big all-star game. And he blessed me richly. Richly he blessed me. I asked him one question. I said, "How does the son of a great man play basketball?" And I don't see the guy, black or white, down around. He says, "Well, I've told my father that I wanted to take him." And he loved me too. I love you, Mr. Farrakhan.
Thank you. Let me say very quickly, that was my grandson at the University of Virginia. And yes, that's the way he got a scholarship to get a good education. And if he doesn't become a pro, he's got his life in front of him to be a fighter for freedom, justice and equality for our people in America and throughout the world. Now, the last thing I wanted to say is, you are among 14.2% of the Bahamians who are unemployed. That is a dangerous statistic for the future of this great nation. And I am hoping that we will turn our hearts to that which will provide employment for our young and our unemployed. And I hope that you as still a strong young man, a man recently said, "Soon the stockbrokers will be driving taxis and the farmers will be driving Lamborghinis." And if you wish to be a part of that which feeds the Bahamas and the West Indies, we need to petition our government. Let's get some land and let's go to work. And if you work hard feeding yourself, you will never be without money or a job to do good for yourself. Thank you very much, brother. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Johnson. I went to school in Chicago and so I know with Minister Louis Farrakhan. And I just want to, I have a point to make. I have a question. I have a point and then a question.
Yes, sir.
I came back to the Bahamas, leaving school in Chicago. And when I came back and I saw the system that we have to have you in the Bahamas, some of the things we talk about in terms of economic freedom, in terms of us owning our own destiny, I didn't see that because what I saw was a neo-colonial system that still exists throughout the Caribbean. I'm a part of a group called Watch Bahamas that has been leading the charge with oil exploration taking place in the Bahamas and the Bahamian waters. We have been talking about the natural resources that exist in the Bahamas. Oil, natural gas, originate, we have minerals going down there.
That's right. That's right.
My question to you, you talked about the minerals that are in Africa, that the people of Africa don't hardly get to partake of. We have been talking to our government and advocating our government that we have oil in the Bahamas, that the oil should be nationalized and owned by the Bahamian people. From your experience being in Africa, what would you advise our government to do if oil was found in the Bahamian waters and explored but not owned by us and those contracts are available? What would you tell our government or advise them, what you have seen in Africa in terms of what should happen for us, the Bahamas and the Bahamian people?
Thank you, sir.
Being in government is not easy. Those of us who are not in power politics may think that when we vote somebody in, that they literally have the power to do what we thought they had the power to do. President Obama is the president of the United States of America, but there are forces that you don't see that manipulate the power that you do see. The oil that is under your foot and in the waters of the Bahamas belongs to the people of the Bahamas. And if you have a strong government, if you don't have the technology to get that oil, because it's one thing to know that it's there, it's another thing to get it out and then put it into the service of the nation. And if you don't have that requisite knowledge, then you have to strike some deal or arrangement with those who have that knowledge, always with the future of the Bahamas in your heart. Let me tell you something, my dear brother. See, oil is so precious today to the developed world. But if you read this book called The Confessions of an Economic Hitman, have you read it?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you read it, then you know that these economic hitmen have gone through the Caribbean. And they will come and they will tell you, "If we increase your ability to have tourist ships come, we can strengthen your harbor. We can make a new airport for you. We can increase your ability to give electric light to your people." But you have to sign this contract. And then they don't even allow the people that live there to do the work. Bechtel in America and others, they bring their own workers in. And if you disagree and refuse, that's when, according to Mr. Perkins, they send the, what do they call them? No, no, no. They call them the jackals. And the jackals come in and every nation has dissatisfaction. All they will do is come into the Bahamas, work among the dissatisfied, and then arm them in a revolt against the government. And then if that does not work, they kill your leaders. And they kill your leaders in order to put fear in the next one that you elect so that he'll toe the line. Now, I'm just telling you, this is the way this politic business works. And you got to have some testicles that you won't be able to get at Walmarts. You're gonna have to have the strength to be willing to give your life. Because what good is your life if somebody offers government officials money for oil? And you get rich and your family gets rich, but you're gonna die. And all you got when you're dead is a little piece of land because you can't take nothing with you when you go. So if you live just for yourself, you're already dead. But if you live, if you live for that which outlives you, and that is the nation, then you'll fight for the people, even if they kill you. You'll go down in history as one who died fighting for Bahamas. And after a while, the people will rise. The people will rise. Did you hear me? See, you can't sit in these seats waiting for a government to do for us. We have to be a powerful force to force the government to do what is right by us because we live here and they live here. Now, I just am telling you, you know, my teacher was very stern and strong. He told me, he told me, well, I don't know what I should say. He said, "When you vote somebody in and they don't do what you set them to do, you make an example of them." That's what white people do. They make an example of you to put fear in those coming behind you. But when you have an awakened and enlightened people that can put fear in what they vote for, then they'll do your will rather than the will of big money and those who would buy the strength that is under your foot. But that's on you. That's on you. And that's why these young people are being beset with guns and drugs. And America is putting bases all around here. You think it's for drug interdiction. I beg your pardon. It is to stop revolt and revolution from the masses of the people who are not being served by their governments. Now, I'm saying this to the governments, look, man, we're family. You can't take no money with you. Corruption should not be a part of our life. Stand for the people. Stand for the wealth that belongs to the people and force the enemy to bow. The scripture says, "Resist the devil and he will flee from you." Ask me about it. They offer me much money to shut my mouth. Yes, you can't buy me. I am not forsaken. And if you're gonna be that kind of leader and you can organize people, go on and organize people with that same spirit that Mr. Wiley has. And if all of us have that spirit, that we're not gonna put somebody in power and let somebody from the outside control them. What did you say? Somebody, no, somebody said it. I want you to say it again. Hell, no. May God bless you, brother. Thank you.
I'm grateful to be here this evening in the presence of a bastion of the spirit of truth. And making, they introduce him as the spirit of truth. We've got to understand the power that we have as a people. If we get the power in our consciousness, we can then express this power. When I was young, I lived on the side of some bushes in Market Street.
When I was young, I lived on the side of some bushes in Market Street, and there was a hen in the bushes laying some eggs. And I lived three or 400 feet from where this hen was laying these eggs. And my frying pan was ready. While she lay her eggs and by the bush, my frying pan is ready, I want these eggs to eat. The hen is thinking of babies, little chickens. I'm thinking of eggs. So the hen decide that, so I got a stick and I say, I'm gonna knock you off these eggs. She said, no, you won't. I got a stick and I whacked the hen one more, one time and she just shifted. She's sitting on the eggs that I want. She shifted and I hit her again and she shifted again. She's not moving on the eggs, she just shifted. And the hen started to look at me in a strange way. I got the message from the hen that says, you want my possession, but you don't understand what I'm doing. I'm looking for children. You're looking for a fried egg. And many of our people have been beaten with the stick to move away from the eggs we sit on. Aragonite, oil are coming up. Various functions that are coming up in our Bahamas that we have been sitting on for years that we need not to move. I hit the hen twice and I, and the hen sent me a message. I will, she didn't move, mind you, I will not move. If you're really serious, you won't move.
Thank you very much. Thank you, brother. Thank you very much. Thank you. See how you can learn from the creatures of God and they show you how to protect your young and to protect what is valuable to you.
Good evening, panel.
Good evening.
My name is Chelly Moss and my question for the minister, sir, I would like you to speak to how important self-esteem is, how important it is to have a sense of identity. And I ask this question because as one of the freedom fighters to help save Clifton Park along with Dr. Reverend C.B. Moss, in our country today, I personally feel that we have a philosophy that foreign is better in our country. Our leaders float around fancy slogans like believe in Bahamians, but I don't think we really believe in Bahamians. I would like for you to speak to how important it is to have a sense of self-identity and know who you are, because when you look at the Bahamas from outer space, it's the most beautiful place in the world, it's the most distinctive place from outer space. When you look at the resources that this little country has, we spoke about oil, we spoke about the aragonite, we spoke about limestone, one of the last prolific fishing grounds in the world. If we can get our act truly together, believe in Bahamians, have that sense of identity, purpose, how important is that first of all, and what type of global impact can this little tiny country make in the world?
My dear brother, the knowledge of self gives you self-esteem. When I was in college in North Carolina, I was the lucky strike sailors person on the campus. And I used to smoke all my, all that I was supposed to give away. But they used to have a saying, L.S.M.F.T. It meant Lucky Strike means fine tobacco. But I read a book once that said, low self-esteem means friction and trouble. When you don't have self-esteem, you're a troublesome person. You make trouble with others and you're easily, easy to anger because every cry it looks like is against you when you don't know who you are and you have no self-esteem. So what the Honorable Elijah Muhammad and Brother Malcolm showed me, they didn't just teach me, they showed me by example, that when you know yourself, that's step one, because self-knowledge is the greatest knowledge, because self-knowledge and God-knowledge is one and the same. How could you be made in the image and likeness of God and know yourself and don't know Him? So if, see, if your self-esteem is rooted in your knowledge of God and your knowledge of self, then you are unafraid to face whatever you have to face to do what needs to be done to become a free, industrious and progressive people. So the problem here, you have a British system of government. That's a problem. I, I, sister, I, I thank you for allowing me to read this. I don't know who did this, but let me read something from this. Your daughter, Gemma Lea, you know, we can't make it without you, child. She put this together, but I wanna read something and I just wanna ask, is it the truth? Now, over here, it says, yes, on July 10th, 1973, the new independence constitution was presented to Prime Minister Lyndon O'Pindling by Prince Charles on behalf of Queen Elizabeth II. With that, the Bahamas became a sovereign, independent nation. Now, let me ask you a question. How could the Queen present you with a constitution? On behalf, I, I, I mean, Prince Charles, present you with a constitution? If she presented it to you, you didn't write it? She wrote it? Well, then what the heck are you arguing for? Your condition is the exact result that your former colonial and slave master gave you sovereignty that you yet don't have. As Malcolm said, you've been tricked. No, don't rub me off the island. Brother, look, when I read that sentence, I say, well, no wonder we're in trouble, because the slave master's daughter write your constitution. How is she gonna write a constitution that frees you from her? She's not gonna do it. So here's a government now with the Westminster system of governance. I, I, if I'm upsetting you, I'm sorry. I, I, no, no, I, I don't mean to upset you.
Speak, speak, speak.
That's not, that's not my desire to upset you. But you know, you have to be very mature to follow a, a system of governance that it took England a long time to develop. Do you know we can't take opposition in your own house if your wife don't like your ideas? You start fight right there. And if you're in government and you have opposition, which is natural in this system of government and it's natural in life, but how you handle opposition is the mark of your maturity. Now, if you think that your opposition is your enemy, then the hatred begins to build between the two parties. This is what you see in America with the Republicans and the Democrats. There's hatred between them and the partisan politics is sentencing the country to the loss of the very liberties that democracy and a republic was to guarantee the citizens. So when you got somebody first delivering your constitution, and I don't know what the terms are, I'd like to be able to read it so I could see what my queen...
But, but, but minister, let me, minister, and if, if she gave them the constitution and we're talking about Clifton Park and we need it to be a tourist attraction for the black community, when you're in this hotel anywhere, they take you to the Queen's steps, but they don't take you to Clifton Park.
Well, that's because you're still the subjects of the Queen. And if you are still the subject of the Queen, how could you be free? See, a subject and you are the object of all of their schemes to rip you off of your wealth. When you had sugar, when you had bananas, when you could make money for England, those industries flourished. But the minute you were so-called free, they would not allow those same industries that made Europe strong, make you strong as well. These are not your friends. These are your enemies. And if you don't recognize that, then you'll never put on the armor of God that will protect you against the wilds of Satan. Well, thank you. Yes, you know...
Can I just add a metaphor? I, I think that as you listen to what the minister is saying and as he refers to America, it tells why we're here, why we Americans of African descent are here. Because if you listen to the comparison that the minister just made, your plight being owned by the Queen is no different than our plight in the United States. It's hookup time. We must all join together, that's why we're here, to connect the dots. That's why we're here, to remind you that you and I, we are the same. It is the same blood at Clifton that is in Mississippi. It is the same blood in Clifton that runs in me. And so this fight you have in Clifton, we will join you. And when we come for you to join us, we don't want to mess out of you. We want you to say, we are one.
Well, I can say, babe, that indeed, the Bahamas has heard all of you. And the beauty about what has been said is that what makes the Bahamas the Bahamas is we are one nation. And to answer and to address Chelly Moss, very crucial question, and even Wade, the reality is that the wealth that we have, we should sit on it and not move. And I do not believe that because oil is there, we must go to get it. And one of those who believe it should stay where it is, because it builds wealth where it is. And if we were to listen carefully to Minister Farrakhan, he spoke about something that is very, very crucial to us and I think mashes all of our cons, to use the Bahamian vernacular, because we are not out there trying to learn to farm. We're not trying to feed ourselves. I can tell you, when I sat and served as a chairman of the Best Commission, an ambassador for the environment, I had the greatest difficulty in making sure that the scientists that we have in the Bahamas understood that genetically modified organisms, meaning the food that we eat, where people take little things out and put little things in, should not be here. We have a young man right here who is actually involved with farming in the natural kind of way and have been able to discover, and we are going to share those things in due course and not gonna let everything out at the same time. And has been able, this is high, high Nigad, high Nigad who has been able to scientifically understand what the loyalists understood, what the Africans understood. Clifton brings us something that I saw in Crooked Island many years ago. I always wondered why it was behind every single house that was in Crooked Island, there was a huge tangerine tree. And if you go to Clifton, you'd see the same thing, because the Africans were able to figure out how to survive here naturally. We should keep our natural capacity as it is and what we have to make sure is that that same negotiated, because it was a negotiated freedom, I am of the view that we should become a republic. I'm of the view that we should have our own system, we should live by our own system and that this constitution that we have needs to be overhauled, because you should never have anyone who say that they are greater than you. And by our constitution, we still have a queen. And guess what? Not one single one of you in here, not one single one of you in here could ever become the greatest you can be in this country in terms of your status, because none of you are in the line of Queen Elizabeth. And so that to me, a negotiated freedom is no freedom at all. And so I feel that very strongly. And so in the circumstances, I would say, what I've always said and so many people stand by, we have to be totally free. And total freedom is not always, is not ever negotiated, you have to take it. And so we have to be sure that when we talk about Clifton, this is my rapper, Mr. Jones, when we talk about Clifton and what part of the fight we have now, we have an individual in the name of Mr. Louis Bacon, who is dedicated to try to change the story that surrounds what all of us as hens are sitting on our egg. And we have to ask ourselves truly, you know, why is it that after 14 years, he's made a determination that he will stand and say he was the leader? And not one of us, not the one that I was inspired by, Vivian Wiley, certainly not me, not Mr. C.B. Moss or Reverend C.B. Moss that was mentioned, not Miss Sam Duncan, who was also mentioned, these are the people who are on the front line of that fight. None of us have spoken about our involvement and that we should be seen as the leader. Then all of a sudden, I'm the clear blue, a fellow in New York says, I was the leader, but from behind. And then goes on to say that, you know, you know, I have to thank God, because as a summoner, I have to let you know that when I talk about the Holy Book, the Holy Book to me is, what is it? The Holy Book, he talks about, listen, because the book, Gone with the Wind. Now, in due course, and this is our second stage, we'll explain to you more, because it's not a part always of the Bahamas' history, but Gone with the Wind is celebrated or understood as being one of the most racist book and movie that ever existed. I'm never supposed to say those things. And when you look carefully at his history, that he can't change, then you have to understand or ask, he said, why in truth, this man has now said 14 years after the fact that he's done something which I can comfortably say, and I know Vivian Wiley will say, amen, was not true. And so ladies and gentlemen, my friends, Bahamians, we are so grateful to have these honorable people come here and to share with us and to show us that they're prepared to stand with us. And what Minister Farrakhan was able to show to us, that indeed, if we pay attention carefully to who we are and what we ought to be, that we will figure it out and once we figure it out, obviously, we have to act on it. We have to be decisive, we have to be clear. So I would thank all of you and I will leave it to Mr. Jones to wrap things up. I know it'll be out of time or near out of time, but definitely, we are grateful for you to be here. We want you to go on to Facebook so you can understand all of what we're doing, so you can understand all of what parts of these things are going on and what role it is that you can have and you can play in this country. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ladies and gentlemen, we have gone over time on radio and so we are flat out of time. We've gone over time. So what we're going to do now, we are going to ask for a minute wrap-up from each of the resource people here and we would let Minister Farrakhan have the final word. Let's begin at the end with Mr. Thompson, just a minute. Thank you.
I, I think that there's, that our lesson does, does, is derived from this event is that your history is as important as your, as your present and to understand where you're going, it was understand where you've been. I will say very much, it was a pleasure to take part in this event with Minister Farrakhan, of course, Miss Smith, my good friend, Cole Smith, the first female voter in the country, the number one suffragette, Miss Ruby Ann Darling, of course, we have at the very, very, well, not even the last one at least, but a lady who has led the way to become the whole question of reparations. It's an interesting and fascinating area. Google it. But thank you very much for having me tonight and it's been a fantastic experience.
Thank you so very much, Charles. Thank you so very much, Charles. Mr. Timber?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and to Brother Wiley for making the motion and to Brother Coe Smith for seconding the motion and for those who are here in the Bahamas who took the I-vote. Thank you for inviting me to be here today to share this reuniting the family in the Bahamas. Your fight is our fight. We are one. And Allah says it be very clear, very clear, that this fight must be won, not just for you, but for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
To Mr. Wiley, whose spark has started this great flame. And to those of you who came out tonight, I know that you're going back enlightened, more enthused for being here tonight. It's been a wonderful night. I'm sure that your social and cultural consciousness has been aroused here tonight. And your resolve is that you will go forth as proponents of truth, spreading the word that indeed, our history is ours. And if we have no history, there will be nothing to pass on to our generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Bev Smith?
I need to just say with love, thank you to Nassau for accepting me. Thank you for going all the way back to the days when I was on a radio station in Miami and to our voices. And thank you for letting me be a part of this. I got choked up. And I'm not apologizing. This is a move of love for me. You cannot stand at Clifton without feeling that your ancestors are there. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before Minister Farrakhan closes out, let me just say that on Thursday night, uh, at the College of the Bahamas, Minister Farrakhan will be speaking at 7:00 PM. It's free of charge, just like tonight. So you can join him. Those of you who are listening to us by means of radio, you would know that you'd be able to be there Thursday night at 7:00 PM at the College of the Bahamas. Minister Farrakhan.
Thank you to all who are here.
It's Wednesday.
And thank you to all that are here. And thank you to Bev Smith and to Coe Smith and to Mr. Wiley and all the panelists. I will close with these remarks. Since the man who wanted to revise our history said that his favorite is gone, his holy book is Gone With the Wind. My holy book too says, "Those who sow the wind will reap the whirlwind." And you certainly will be Gone With the Wind.
Thank you so very much. With that, with that powerful line, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end. And let me say that the College of the Bahamas date is Wednesday, not Thursday, Wednesday night at 7:00 PM. So if you're listening by radio, it's 7:00 PM on Wednesday. And we'd like to thank you so very much for being here this evening. And we hope that you found tonight inspirational as well as illuminating. And we thank all of our speakers, particularly Minister Farrakhan, for being here this evening. Thank you for coming and good evening, everyone.